This time I'll call the special meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. The only announcement I has is our next regular board meeting and I'm not looking at the agenda, so I can't tell you the exact date. I can't do it at the same time, but anyway. At this time, I guess we need to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Francis has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett. One thing I did fail to do was say that Mr. Rogers would not be able to join us this evening due to some illness in his family, and so we want to keep Jimmy in our prayers and thoughts today. And the other thing I forgot to do is to do a roll call, but when we do this vote, I will have a roll call of who's here. Mr. Burnett, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
Yay.
Mr. Francis.
Yay.
Mr. Henson.
Yay.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Yay.
Mr. Nesbit.
Yay.
Dr. Rogers.
Yay.
Okay, motion carries unanimously with those that are in attendance. Next on our agenda is a discussion about where we want to proceed with the mask mandate. If we get a motion, I'd say we could do some further discussion on the issue.
I make a motion that we deal away with and make it optional for students and teachers to wear masks.
We have a motion from Mr. Henson.
I stick that season Kirkpatrick.
Okay. Um, for clarification purposes, we might want to be more specific on that motion. Would someone like to try to get a little bit more detailed?
If, if Mr. Henson and Mr. Kirkpatrick agree, I would amend the motion to state that Haywood County Schools is making face coverings for employees and students optional effective tomorrow, June 22, 2021. This would allow employees, parents, and students to make decisions suitable to their circumstances. Furthermore, Haywood County Schools will identify and closely monitor key indicators, make appropriate adjustments as needed during the summer session and as we move toward the 21-22 school year.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Henson and Mr. Kirkpatrick, that we read it that way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we still have the motion as amended and seconded. Now we'll have questions and discussion. And I'd like to hear Mr. Smathers' thoughts on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got, I got several thoughts. And let me just say right up front, I would advise you against this motion. Let me tell you why. I heard this was, I was notified this was coming on the place, so I did, I went back and researched on Friday, Sunday day. I've also spent some time on the internet trying to get the latest, up to date matters in play. Essentially, I don't think you have authority to grant that motion, and that if you pass it, you would actually be acting unlawful. Let me tell you why. The, we addressed this part of it all when the pandemic first came on, but the, you know, we're a, the board is a political subdivision of the state. State tells us what we can do and what we can't do. We, we operate on behalf of the state. You know, the governor has authority to declare an emergency, and that has, that has been done. His current orders expire on July the 30th of this year. Now, previously, the, there was a mandate for no masks. The legislature passed the statute, or passed in this past session, the opening of the public schools. And when legislature did it, they did that on the saying that if schools open up, you are to follow the guidance of the Health and Human Services. In that also is that the Health and Human Services Toolkit says that for, where schools are restricted area, that you have, that you have to have masks indoors. That's in the toolkit, and that's what the legislature passed. This was, you know, that's, that's what we're following. Now, if you go forward with this motion and vote it, there are a lot of potential problems that I think really are unnecessary. First off, it will certainly put us at odds with our local health department because Health and Human Services are charged with enforcing the rules that have been passed by the legislature. So we would in effect be going against, I mean, the Health and Human Services and the rules and regulations that they have to follow for enforcing public health in North Carolina. That's one reason. I mean, that's, that would be the equivalent of us saying we're not going to follow a building code ordinance because we don't like it. We have to follow what the regulations are that we have to deal with. Although I, I would be seriously questioning that anyone would do it, but violation of a, of, under chapter 13825, specifically except as otherwise provided, a person who violates a provision of chapter or rules adopted by the commission or local board of health should be guilty of misdemeanor. Yeah, I think you're putting your employees in a very difficult situation because you are, by directing this, you are telling Mr. Knowlton, teachers, administrators in our school system to not follow what the guidance is by the health department. I don't know that we've ever done anything like that, to say we're not going to follow the health department rules. And we don't, we don't pick and choose health department rules that comes to sanitation, food. We don't have that authority to do that. I'd be really concerned about y'all taking this step. Set, you know, the board has general governmental immunity when you operate within the confines of what statutes and the rules are. And it's my job to tell y'all that. I'm not aware of any rule or law anywhere that, that says we have the right to opt out of the mask mandate. That's one thing. So when you, when you go outside what the prevailing rules are, you're really flying outside what, what we call ultra-via, outside your corporate responsibility. More importantly, when the legislature passed the rules this summer, they gave two boards immunity over and above regular governmental immunity for any specific related COVID liability, provided you follow the guidelines. If you don't follow the guidelines, that's specific immunity. You know, I, whether the virus is, you know, it's obviously on the way down, that's just the way it is. But if, if you, if you go with this motion, and, and an issue was to come up during the school this summer, we don't have a defense. If someone said, I got, my child got COVID at school, or my child came home from school and I got COVID, or we had a teacher that got COVID, and it's because, and, you know, plaintiffs lawyers would jump all over this because we are now outside of our immunity. And if you go outside your immunity, that's not just as a board, that's to y'all individually. So if y'all vote, you know, I would encourage everybody to think about that seriously because you're outside. Before you had any thoughts further on this motion, you need to make contact with our insurance carrier because I, I have not called the insurance carrier, but they'd probably tell you, under no circumstances do you do this outside the, of the, that you're not following the state mandates. We don't have the authority, we're, if you, this is not, I know of no law that says we have authority to not follow a state Health and Human Services guideline. Now, I, it may be something everybody doesn't like these masks. It may not be what we think is necessary, but that's, that's, that's the way it is. I just think that it's a, you make, you're putting your employees in a very bad situation. I think you're putting yourselves in a potentially bad situation. I don't think that probably the state, or I don't know whether the state would do anything, but the state can't even make an injunction. I mean, they, the local health department can come in and say, you know, we want to join the Haywood County School System in violating, to make the school system file, have masks in schools as required by the health, I don't know if they would. But if they did, I don't know we have, I don't know we have a defense for this. I think the, I think the more prudent thing to do is if, if y'all are opposed to the mask, and I, you know, there's no problem with being opposed to it, but I think it would be more than, I'd just have to make a motion to say, we encourage the governor or whoever else to, to modify this. But this is, right now is just up for the summer school. We don't know what the legislature or anything says for, for, for the fall. I sourced, I, I heard Harnett County had, had said do this. I searched today on Google, try to see if there's any other school systems that have taken this action, and I haven't found anybody jumping on the bandwagon. So I don't think Harnett was right, I don't think, I don't know why they did it. I don't think they're on strong legal ground, and I think they'll certainly put their school system and their employees in that situation. The, I do want to read you one thing. I just, just, this is the latest as of this afternoon. And this is where it really needs to be addressed, not at our level. This, there was a bill proposed, this is, I got this from News and Observer just this afternoon. A bill was proposed in the State House Monday, which would allow local school boards to set their own mask policies next year. Under the current mask mandate, schools are considered at-risk settings where face coverings are still required, but Senate Bill 173 would let school boards make that decision for themselves. Decisions about face coverings for our students should be left to the local authorities. This was representative from Union County, said in earlier, our school boards are in a much better position to implement policies that reflect their communities than the governor. Cooper is wrong. They should have the flexibility and authority to make those decisions. Proposed legislation would be in effect only for the 21-22 school year, and allowed Cooper to still require masks or shut down a school if case counts arise. In the legislation, who we're bucking is the legislators, the legislation that opened up the schools that said, Governor, you know, you got to force, let the Health and Human Services. So we're not, we're not on firm legal ground on this. And I, I ethically have to tell y'all that y'all should not pass this motion. I cannot tell you that this is a motion that is supported legally because I don't think it is. And I don't think the other 99 counties in this state so far aren't jumping on this. And even the state legislature is rel, is, you know, basically saying that's a mandate that was come, and that's going to have to be changed down with the state legislature. So if, if you go this route, I think there's a lot of peril out there for, for us. And it's really, I think, the more prudent thing to be would say, look, there's some flexibility in the school system. This is something, you know, maybe Bill, you can chime in on.
Well, Pat, yeah.
Not just for summer school. You can have classes outside in areas that you don't have to have a mask. You can get the spacing that you, that can deal with so that you don't have to mask. I just think there's some other alternatives that are legally viable and potential that would work instead of going on out on a limb here that if somebody wanted to cut it off behind you, they're going to cut it off behind you. I just don't think there's a basis for it. That's, that's my thoughts.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Pat. Speaking of operating within the legal bounds, if I'm not mistaken, according to the North Carolina State Constitution, any executive order passed by the governor has to be approved by his general counsel or the cabinet within 30 days of the executive order. That never took place. As a matter of fact, I think there's an impending lawsuit as a result of that, which pretty much leaves the, I don't know.
Probably, I don't know if that's true or not, but the court certainly hasn't said that. I haven't seen anything that says that. Now, but again, this was not, the governor's not acting on his own. This was a legislative session while passed this summer, and it said, open, when we open the schools back up, we have to follow the mandates of Health and Human Services. If the legislature had not wanted school systems to follow Health and Human Services, they could have said that, but they didn't. So we're not, we're not just saying we don't like what the governor's done or his procedure. We're saying legislature, you opened up schools and you said, follow Health and Human Services directions, and you also said that we would be free from any liability so long as we followed those Health and Human Services. This is, this is not, this is not us against the governor. This is a legal situation and a health and safety issue. And that's how it's being dealt with. You know, I, 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 you know, I don't know if the governor's counsel's seen that or not, but I, I've, I've never heard that argument. I certainly haven't seen any, any court at this point say that this is an invalid order. Now, if the court comes back and says it's an invalid order, hey, okay. As of right now, that's not our decision. We got to follow what the legislature has dictated and the governor has implemented. I, I think you're on, I think you're on very shaky grounds. If y'all do this and somebody in Haywood County files a lawsuit next week saying in effect that my child is going into a situation that you are allowing other children to come in who have not been vaccinated. And because if you're under 12, you can't get vaccinated right now, is my understanding. And if you say you're going to, you're going to allow my child to come into a school, and I have a right to send my child to school, but you're doing it knowing that the state says you have to wear a mask, and you're saying people don't have to wear a mask. How do I defend that? I have no defense. You know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I, and we've, we've, we've been through a lot of lawsuits and I, you know, we can stretch the envelope and, and put our, our, our best foot forward on a lot of things, but I'm waiting, I mean, I don't know of a defense we would have to that. And if the Health and Human Services came in and said, we're going to conjoin y'all because y'all are not wearing your mask, I don't know of any authority that says that, well, Health and Human Services, you don't have the right to tell us to do that because the legislature gave them that authority.
Well, let me, let me make two points then. Under, first, let me say, it's my understanding that under the North Carolina Emergency Management Act, that operating under a declared state of emergency, that the governor can exercise expanded powers, but only with the concurrence of the council of the state. That, that has not been followed. But, but understanding that the legislature hasn't acted upon and approved the school toolkit. What I think, and I don't know, you haven't heard the whole of the board, but what's, what's the strongest measure that we can take and, and be within the limitations and not make Haywood County Schools liable?
I, I think that, one, you pass a motion saying you oppose the mask, and you can direct the superintendent to take all means possible to make it as least offensive and comfortable for students. And that would include encouraging classes outdoors and spacing within the Health and Human Services guidelines. I think, you know, I'm not sure what that, I don't know if you can space them out big enough to do it or come up with a way so that it's not as, you know, as uncomfortable for kids as possible. Because I mean, I understand what, I mean, I understand, nobody likes wearing the mask, okay? And the, but it's, it's not something that we can say we just don't want to do. We can make it, and Bill, Bill, why don't you chime in? Is that a principle that has been dealt with the actual logistics of this thing?
Well, in terms of opening up as much as we have the authority to do, I think that we have done that, and I have done that sometimes with you all voting on it, and sometimes independently when I knew that I had that authority. We have reopened field trips that are local, again, following the mask order for the location that we're attending and on, and on the buses when we're going. We have opened facility use agreements. We made mask optional for adults a day or two before the state did because we had very carefully read the regulations and saw that there was no prohibition for adults unless, unless there were students in front of them in summer school or in childcare. So I think you all, as a board, have led the way in the state for doing everything that you legally could do. And I'm very proud of our whole school system, board included, for doing as much as we could do rather than, you know, as little as we could do. You know, we went to school five days a week, and the other folks who went, for the most part, went four days. Twenty-five districts didn't go at all. So you have certainly led the way for this community, I think, as far as you legally could. And so I would continue to work to that end. But, you know, I don't know what else that we can do safely to change any of the other orders rather than continue to talk to our state representatives in the governor's office. Because that, that liability is out there, certainly for, for the board or for any of us who, you know, carry out an order that doesn't follow the law.
Dr. Bill, have you, have you or Trev reached out to the Health Department to see and let them know of our concerns with the kids still wearing masks during summer school? And, you know, especially, we're getting, it's getting warmer, and I know we've got air conditioning in some of the schools and some of the classrooms, it's still, it's hot, kids are in masks, and, you know, have we talked to them to see what we can do?
We, we sent our last changes to the, to Public Health through the lead nursing supervisor, and we have talked to them throughout the pandemic many times on Saturdays and Sundays and late at night. But when we, when we said that masks were not required outside, that they were not required inside unless you were doing summer school or student learning, they weren't inside, required inside for adults unless you were doing childcare or summer school, when we said we were going to open up facility use contracts and open up local field trips, we shared all of that with them, and they read it and told us that they agreed with those changes and that they believe those changes followed the current regulations. And we did not go to them with this one because we've not seen a regulation change that would allow it. And in the past, when we've seen changes that would allow it, we just made the changes, or if we felt like it was something that the board should do, we've asked you all to consider it and to look at it. But we sent that during the last week of school, and we made those changes the day after the 10-month calendar ended for employees.
You know, folks, this, this, this is, one of the things that I, I know this may be hard to believe, because I think a lot of this, there's people that don't like us. You know, don't like the school system. And I hope, I believe there are very few. But I would not want to give them an opening to say that the Haywood County School Board is not following the law and file some sort of lawsuit against us. Say, you know, we don't, we don't follow the law, you know? Our school, our school system is one of the tops in the state. And it's, it's there because we've, we've got hard-working people, y'all hire good people, people work hard, and we do our best to follow the rules and the law as best we know how. And we've done, I think our school system is, is where we are in this state. This saying we're not going to follow the state law is contrary to what I, at least what I think the reputation of this school system is. And that is that we, you know, we work hard, we follow the law, we tell our teachers to follow the law, we tell our administrators to follow the law, and that's what we need to do. I just think it's more prudent to put this off way, you know, this, the current situation is, is, will be 39 days from today is when the current order expires. I, this is something that the legislature needs to address. They don't need, and all the political pundits, and there's a lot of them out there, need to put the burden on, they're exactly pundits is what they are. They need to put the burden on the legislature who can make this decision instead of saying, hey, Haywood County Schools, this is you making it. Because we don't have authority in that, in my opinion.
Pat, I, the frustration is, is that we're getting a lot of parents calling wanting, you know, concerns about the mask. We see other states not wearing masks for months now. And it's very frustrating to our board to, to field these type of questions because we feel, I, I feel like I'm speaking on behalf of the board on, on most of this is that we're concerned for the health and safety of the kids having to wear the mask. And we, we've seen other
Uh, and we, we've seen other states, uh, open back up, uh, much faster than North Carolina. It's frustrating, uh, because I, I personally, this is me thinking that I think the mask are detrimental in some cases and I think that's the, the frustration that our board's feeling and that, and we want to do something about it because we've had the health and wellbeing of our students in mind the whole time on this pandemic tour, this whole time. And I think that's been part of the frustration is, is that we, we want to do what we feel like in other states have proven, that you can go forward, you know, and we're, here we are.
I agree with you, Chairman, and I, I, I understand the frustration and, and I, look, I hear the same thing. There's not many people that haven't told me, said, you know, why are they doing this? And that, my response is this, and I'll be honest with you, it's frustrating for me to tell y'all you shouldn't do this.
I know.
Well, I mean, I really don't like, I really and truly don't like telling you that this is, this is what the law is and what your exposure is. And y'all are free to say, Pat, we listen to you, but, but, but we can't, not going to go with it. But I just gotta tell you, I think, I think that if there are some pitfalls out there and, and it's frustrating for me to have to tell you this and I don't like telling you this, but I won't, I won't be able to tell y'all, we can do what y'all want to do for the benefit of the kids because of the school. But I, I've got to tell you, right now, I don't think this motion would be, you can override what the Health Department is now. There may not be anybody doing anything about it in 30 days. The legislature passes something now, in 30 days, it's all over with. I don't know. But I do think if something happens here, itself up individually and as a school system that's not there. And, and I think the best, I think, you know, this, and I know it's frustrating, y'all, y'all the worst, but I think the best thing is always, the truth is always convenient. The truth is, that's not our decision. That is a decision by the legislature and call the state representatives, call the governor's office, we'll give you the phone number, call them, because we've called them. But that's just not our decision.
Well, Ms. Smathers.
I don't like telling y'all that.
Let, let me ask you another question, Mr. Smathers. Um, I, I guess I'm asking as a point of order. Um, we, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, could that motion be further amended to, to direct, um, administration and individual schools to create learning environments where the mask could be optional, still complying with, uh, the toolkit? Um, for example, uh, maybe in a, in a larger setting where mask would not be required or outdoors when possible. Uh, can a motion be amended in that regard? And then second, uh, can we follow up that motion with, um, a secondary motion that would direct, uh, administration and this board to write a resolution in support of the upcoming House bill, is it 173, is that right? That's the number sticking, 173, in support of, um, that bill? Does those two make sense? I mean, is that, give me some clarity here.
Uh, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you, I, I would amend it to basically say we oppose the mask mandate, that we are directing the administration to, for, towards finding a learning, uh, learning, uh, settings as far as possible under the guidelines of the toolkit and the Department of Services, so that children do not have to wear masks such as being outside, uh, spaced with great, I don't know what, what it says, Bill, what's about spacing distance, uh, but so as to avoid as much as possible having to wear masks. And further that we support House Bill 173. Now, that's going to be difficult on the administrators to meet that, but I think, you know, if, if, for example, what, there's what, 700 students in summer school right now, is that right?
We had, uh, we had, uh, seven 14 the first day and, uh, the, the five-day count was, uh, in the 600s, we'll have a 10-day count. I think tomorrow is the 10th day, Ms. Barker can verify that. And I've asked Ms. Barker to give us an enrollment, not necessarily, uh, who attended, but an enrollment after the 10th day. So we have.
Where does that taking place, the classes are there? Are they in all the schools?
I'm sorry?
Where, where are the, where are the kids attending school, summer school? Are they at, are they at the respective schools or are they all centrally located somewhere?
There, there are, um, seven sites, uh, there are three elementary sites, um, at North Canton, Clyde and Hazelwood. Um, there are two middle school sites, one at Waysville Middle, uh, Canton Middle is serving Bethel Middle students. Um, and then the two traditional larger high schools. And we had to do that because of the state law that, uh, required us to offer 150 hours of instructional time. That would be right near impossible to staff every location across the district and offer 150 hours at all locations. Um, so, uh, with about 230 or so teachers and many other staff members, clerical and custodial, bus drivers, we were able to do it, um, at seven sites. I, I would say, um, you really didn't ask me for, for these comments, but I would say, uh, I, I don't know that there's probably anyone in the meeting that, um, likes masks. I've not talked to any of you all or ever heard any of you ever say that you like masks. And I also wanted to say that, um, you know, like Pat, you know, I, I, I share your frustration. You all gave me a good bit of authority when the pandemic started, a resolution to make some decisions, uh, that needed to make, be made quickly instead of advertising and waiting on a meeting. Um, and you've allowed me to do that. Of course, I've told you about it when I've done it. And if I could have, um, if I felt like I could have legally made this decision on my own, I would have already done it, you know, for all the reasons that Pat mentioned. So certainly we can ask our schools to, um, do as much as they can outside. I've been on some of the summer school locations and they're doing that already. And certainly we can, if you all want to, help you work on a resolution and continue talking with our, um, state representatives in the General Assembly and the governor's office and.
When is our, Bill, when is our, when is our next registered school meeting?
July the 12th.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Francis. It's Monday, the 12th. We do not have, we do not have a work session planned before that meeting because of the week of the 4th, but it's the 12th.
Board, I would, uh, this would be, I would, this would be my suggestion. I think just with what you're saying here tonight, with those understanding, working with the staff to say, look, we're not going to start working when they draft a resolution that basically says the following, we oppose this mask mandate, uh, we think it's against the middle, uh, we want, but we want, uh, we oppose it, we want to support it, uh, Senate Bill 173, House Bill, whichever one it is, and that, uh, go ahead and, and obviously go ahead and pass a resolution tonight, but have a, a, a resolution ready for that July 12th meeting that says, you know, we oppose this, we're going to go forward with, uh, you know, we're going to work with the toolkit and mandate of the legislature and the governor, but at this time, I don't think there's anything, I think Bill's hearing you loud and clear that says, hey, within the confines of, of what we have to work with, with the toolkit, we're going to spread them out and put them outside and do whatever we possibly can so that the, the, uh, the wastefulness and the problems with the mask, they're, they're out there, uh, is as, is as little as it can be. Uh, I, that's a big burden on you, Bill, but I don't, I think that's what you can do within the confines of the toolkit.
Um, Pat, go ahead, David.
Okay, I do have one comment, one question. Um, I support the quick passage of House Bill number 173 and I don't know how we could get that, uh, on a faster track. The second, the second comment is a question actually. Is there any pathway to a legal challenge to this mask mandate?
Uh, well, yeah, we could file a lawsuit and, uh, we could say that the governor doesn't have authority and the legislature doesn't have authority and we can try to file something, but by the time we got that filed, I think this is all going to be over with. I don't think we would win. I mean, the current order goes to July 30th. If, if I like you are reading all the tea leaves across the state correctly, I don't, I don't think that some fall, there's going to be a mandate on, on masks in schools. I just don't think that, the, I mean, I checked the numbers today across the state on the average of, uh, the COVID, the COVID going down and it's going down substantially. I mean, as people, more people get vaccinated, you know, and I think the biggest argument for masks right now that I'm hearing rightly or wrongly, it makes some sense to me, is that 12-year-olds and under can't get vaccinated and that's why we're at a restricted.
And they're also at the least risk.
Yeah, they're at the least risk. I agree, I agree.
Exactly.
That's what's being seen, they're not, and I'm not trained in the health and I don't, I don't pretend to know, okay? Uh, but I just know that the, uh, uh, I can't, I can't, I want, I want to back y'all up, but I, it's, I just don't know how we do it. And I'm just afraid that we're, we got people out there that would really jump on us big time.
Mr. Smathers.
I, I think also that if, if, if we're on a stronger, a stronger legal basis, there'd be more counties jumping on this bandwagon across the state than Harnett did. I think they just went way out, I would think they went out there and I'm not, you know, there may be somebody doing it tonight, but I'm not seeing any movement and I'm not seeing anything from the State School Boards Association or any, I'm not seeing anything from the, you know, and, and again, remember this mandate was by the State Board of Education too. It's not just the government, it's not just the Health and Human Services, State Board of Education approved this.
Well, I, I think where we go from here is, is, uh, I think if, if, uh, Mr. Henson and Dr. Rogers and Mr. Kirkpatrick was, would withdraw the motion, if that would be what they would like to do, otherwise we, we could vote on it. I think trying to add more to that same motion is going to be messy, um, and difficult to do, but I think.
Well, I, Chuck, I, I think that, um, it will be messy, um, but it does create a roadmap of how we've got to the place where we're going to ask.
Yeah.
For an amendment that says, um, I ask administration to create environments or settings where masks can be optional, uh, and still follow the approved state toolkit. And, um, I think we can amend it to that, still have a roadmap of how we got there.
Okay.
And vote on that motion, uh, if, if amended. Now Larry and, and Stephen would have to.
That's correct.
Read such an amendment.
That's correct.
And then we can come back with an additional, uh, motion to write a resolution that would be sent on behalf of administration and the, uh, the board to support, and I did look it up, it's Senate Bill 173.
Okay.
The only point I'm saying in your motion is that, the motion as amended now is that you're directing, uh, that you want to develop an optional, uh, an optional mask policy. You're directing the board, uh, you're directing administration to, as of now, to work within the toolkit to find alternatives to mandatory masks and settings that we can have masks as class. Is that, am I saying that right?
Uh, can we make that in a separate motion? Cause I'm kind of like, I'm feeling like Chuck and, and the fact that it's getting, you know, we're, we're amended and amending and so it's getting sort of twisted there and I want to make sure what we do, everybody is clear about it and understands it.
Well, you're just voting on the amendment, you're not voting on the previous.
Okay.
Motions and you got to create, I, I think if you don't create the roadmap of how you got here, it doesn't tell the story.
That's correct. I see your point. So the motion, um, I think we're live streaming now, a lot of people have not even know what the motion was. Uh, my phone, people started texting me saying that they are watching now. So it is live streaming, is my understanding. So, um, the roadmap, I think is the, the right way to approach it and, but the first part of that motion, um, if we were to go down that motion and our attorney has said that we're going to be illegal, uh, or stepping outside the boundaries of our authority. And so, Pat, you say we can just amend that part of it?
I think, I think it would be prudent that if the board members who made the motion originally just withdrew it and did a clean motion that says in essence that the board opposes the mask mandate, that we're directing the administration to develop a, a, a procedure that, that we can operate as mask-free as possible within the confines of the health depart, of the Health and Human Services mandates and the toolkit as established by the legislature. And they can start working on it and they can, I think just as, that motion itself is a direction to build to start spreading the kids out and taking them outside as much as possible and we're not occurring any liability.
Well, and, and board, just for the record, it's, it's basically anything outside is what it is.
Yeah.
If you look at the toolkit, it's being outside as much as you can be, you know, when it's not raining or, you know, thunderstorm or something like that. Um, that's, that's, that's the way to comply with the current state regulations and we have a little bit of that already, having been in some of the summer school sites, but we could direct, direct them to do that as often as reasonably possible.
Um, okay. Mr. Henson, are you willing to withdraw your motion and Mr. Kirkpatrick, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes, I'll withdraw my second, but one thing I do want to say is, I, I, I'm talking here now, we've all, we've went back to, okay, now we want to direct our superintendent through a motion to tell our school system to get social distancing and going outside as much as possible. First of all, I don't think we need to be telling the superintendent anything yet. Obviously, I think he has already did some of that through the schools. So now we're getting into a situation where we're trying to direct a school to help run their own school. So I, I mean, I, I understand and I don't know whether we really need to say anything that we're sort, that we're trying to tell Mr. Knowles to push, push something that we obviously already know that is in the policy and it's already in the law, I mean, mandate that is unfair, that's why we're here. I'm, and now that, so, yes, I, I.
I think we lost you.
Can you hear me?
No, we lost you, buddy. But we understand the gist of what you're saying. So to go from here, I would like to, um, entertain a motion that we describes what Pat has said. So to go from here, I would like to entertain a motion that we describes what Pat has said. And in a separate motion, I think needs to be made for us to come up with a resolution. And I don't think we need to wait till July the 12th. I think we just need, everybody's got the gist of what it is. We can email it out and if there's any corrections or anything like that, Dr. Bill, I think that would be what, so we can get it expedited quickly. Would be my suggestion. Yes.
Chuck, I would like to see us on that resolution in support of House Bill, our Senate Bills 173. I would love to see that be worded carefully by the board and then sent to every senator, every representative and to the governor. So I would like to make sure it's, it hits every, every target.
Okay. So are you making that in the form of a motion?
Not, not yet. I think you is wanting to do the other one first. So I, I do make the motion that, that we set the precedent that we, just like Pat put in words, that we basically don't like the mask mandate and that we're directing our school system to look for ways to comply with it, but without the kids having to wear masks or the adults having to wear masks. And so every how Pat can word that legally so that we won't be crossing any boundaries, but getting the word out there and letting it be known that we do not support it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Burnett. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Henson seconded. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Do what, Stephen?
Will Pat restate what he, he made his motion?
Yeah.
Let me, let me, all right. The motion, I think, I think what y'all are asking would be, if I could write this as I go, that the Haywood County Board of Education publicly states they're in opposition to the current mask mandate for public schools. And directs, but directs school administration to develop a procedures and guidance to, 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 to.
I don't know that they want to go down the pathway of telling Dr. Bill his day to day duties. Is that what I'm?
Well, no, I think you said to, to develop a program that lessens the impact of the mask as little as possible under the current guidelines as mandated by the state.
Okay. We'll give you a minute to write it down and then we're going to read it into the record so we'll have it. Okay. But, Dr. Bill, are you okay with that?
Do you have any input?
No, I'm good with that. We would simply repeat some directives that we would shared with them. I think they'd be very happy to comply. It's mainly using the breaks that are allowed in the, in the toolkit and being outside as much as possible for learning and childcare.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Let me see if this is what y'all, I've got. The Haywood County School System publicly opposes the current mask mandate for public schools in North Carolina. But directs the school administration to develop procedures to develop procedures to comply with school laws. But, but permit, I didn't, wait a minute. Trying to figure out how to put this in the way. Rest. To develop procedures to comply with the mandate, but lessen the negative impact of masks such as social distancing and outdoor classrooms. Does that make sense to y'all what I just said? Let me try this again, okay? Haywood County School System publicly opposes current mask mandate for public schools. But directs the school administration to develop procedures to comply with the mandate, but, but lessen the negative impact of masks such as social distancing and outdoor instruction to meet the purpose of the, of the public, meet the purpose of the school system within the confines of the make, of the mask mandate. Does that, that make, does that make sense to y'all?
The only thing I would add to that, Pat, or not add, but I would change it to a Haywood County Schools Board of Education.
Yep.
Because it's not the Haywood County Schools.
That's right, that's right.
It's the board that's taking this action.
Publicly opposed the court, the current mask mandate for public schools. But, but directs the school administration to develop procedures to comply with the mask mandate, but lessen their negative impact by encouraging and implementing is instruction with proper social distancing and outdoor, uh, outdoor instruction and pursue it to current guidelines, toolkit guidelines of the state.
It's being recorded so we can get that exact wording. So that, that sounds good.
We're already complying to the school, school, the mandates set, you know, so we want to be able to look at ways to still comply, but also give some flexibility to, to teachers and kids for not wearing the mask if, if we can. Is that what we're, we're trying to get at?
I think that's what I've heard y'all say.
Yeah, yes. David's accepted that wording and who, Mr. Henson, is that okay with you since you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Any more question or discussion on the motion as Pat read it?
Attempted to write.
All right. Then we're going to vote, boys and girls. Mr. Burnett?
Yay.
Mr. Clark?
Yay.
Mr. Francis?
Yay.
Mr. Henson?
Yay.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yay.
Mr. Nesbit?
Yay.
Dr. Rogers?
Yay.
Okay. That motion passes unanimously. And do we need to make a motion to, uh, ask our attorney and superintendent to come up with a resolution? Or do you want to just let them, direct them to do so?
I, I think you could pass a motion tonight.
Okay.
Just says.
And I think we, you know, and I, I agree with the fact that it needs to include the support of the, the Senate Bill 173. So somebody come up with a motion to that effect will move forward on it.
Make a motion to, um, for Haywood County Schools Board of Education to support Senate Bill 173. And send it to the appropriate folks.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, I'll, let's see, Mr. Burnett?
Yay.
Mr. Clark?
Yay.
Mr. Francis?
Yay.
Mr. Henson?
Yay.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yay.
Mr. Nesbit?
Yay.
Dr. Rogers?
Yay.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Anything further to come for the board tonight?
I just want to thank the board for listening to me. I, I think, I think this is the way to address it. I don't want to have to be defending all sorts.
We didn't want to do it, Pat.
Yes, that's, that was against what we wanted, Pat, but it's somebody judgmental.
No, look, y'all, I've told y'all this before, y'all free, free to throw me under the bus and just say it's a lawyer's fault.
Well, it is tonight.
It is tonight. I accept that, that's, that's just, that's part of the job.
There being nothing else, go ahead, Dr. Bill.
I'm just going to say I'll try to get some communication out this evening or at the very latest in the morning to our employees so they have some directions on, uh, wearing masks less often during instruction and childcare.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll get with Pat and, and if it's a resolution, Pat, Pat may have to write it. If it's just a letter of support, I can probably do it.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. There being nothing else, then we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone, for being here this evening.